To the special society. And on top of that, too, the keynote speaker was Ms. Muser, a math educator at Burnsville High School. And the affinity groups at Burnsville High School have started to take on some pretty cool approaches with their meetings as we are starting to get into the year and introducing ourselves throughout the school community. The Gender Sexuality Alliance started their meetings sometime in September and continue to hold them every Thursday. A discussion meeting was held on the third of October where students talked about the environment that, or the environment at the school in supporting LGBTQ plus students. And then also they continue to host meetings within the following, or throughout Tuesdays with throughout the year. The students' unions had their Hispanic Heritage Month event here at Diamond Head on the sixth. Students created posters showcasing Hispanic culture and countries across, across Latin America and such, such as Mexico, Puerto Rico, Colombia. And it was done in a way where it's like you were able to get a passport and go to these different booths and have students essentially stamp on the passport. So a pretty cool interactive experience for people to, you know, get to learn more about Hispanic Heritage Month and the different cultures that revolve around it. And it came with a lot of entertainment with dances, vendors, and food, and great student involvement and presence in the support of the event. So a lot of people have mentioned a lot of great positivities out of it. And on top of that as well, the Asian Student Association held their first meeting on the 11th just yesterday to kick off the year, introduce the members to each other. We had a niche, get to know, meet the ASA Board cahoot in which, you know, we asked some really interesting questions about our board members. One in particular was about Mr., revolved around Mr. Parkin and Dr. Belmont sharing the same band. So some pretty interesting stuff to learn. And then also we have the Diwali celebration coming up in November, which is undergoing plans. And then the Black Student Union is about, is going to host their first meeting on the 26th of October, introducing the various works and events that the BSU hosts throughout the year. And also just an opportunity for students to get to know each other and, you know, get involved in what the school's community is like. And then the Muslim Student Association held their, held a meeting about prayer passes where students are able to get passes during school times to pray. And also had a fun activity called Islamic Jeopardy, learning about Islam through our favorite wondrous enlightened cultural game of Jeopardy. Going into some other activities as well, Youth and Government Conference or Yig night on October, or September 26th. And then we're continuing to go into the conference with a lot of student involvement. A lot of students are seem very interested and active in trying to get involved with the program. And students are also preparing for the large scale training event called Launch. That will be taking place at Fridley High School on October 28th. And then as well as that, we're just preparing students to see what the conference is like in January, January 2024. Also volunteering, we have the Green Apple Day, Green Apple Day of Service that was, that took place on Monday, the second. Students picked up trash around campus and surprisingly, in the rain as well, with over sixty, sixty students picking up campus, picking up trash around campus in the rain. So pretty impressive. And then Matilda, I've heard that over seventy-five students are involved in the production of it, including cast, crew, and pit. And then show dates will be taking place in November 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, 15th, 17th, and 18th. And on to the athletics at Burnsville High School. The football team won the homecoming game against Roseville from twenty-nine to seven. And we're expected to play our last home game on the 13th. And I believe some, next Thursday will be the last game of the entire season where they'll be playing against, I believe it's Lakeview South, if I'm not, if I'm not incorrect. It will be an away game and that'll, I believe, be the final game for the boss football team. Girls volleyball also won their first game against Lakeview South on the second of October, three to two. Cross Country had the Mikes meet on October 5th in honor of Mike Michael Monday, seventh grader who suddenly passed away in two thousand and two from heart complications. And they have their championship, championship meet tomorrow on the 13th. Girls tennis sectionals at Baseline Tennis Center. Matches won by Sidney Hendrahan and Ashley King, as well as Sarah Caddles for individuals. And they continue to go into the sectionals with Ashley and Sidney participating in more matches. And then girls tennis had their, or girls soccer, I apologize, had their last home game on the fifth. And then they won their away game against Two Rivers from, from zero to one to zero on the 30th of September. A student had told me as she was talking about the seasons wrapping up, saying that quote, "I enjoyed the community and felt it was more united." And then girls swimming had their meet in Moorhead. Another student who's part of the swimming team, Sunlee Chang, had mentioned, "It was a great and safe, great and safe trip. As students, we respected the space and had a great night." And then as fall sports are wrapping up, winter sports will be starting sometime in November, I believe, towards the end of November. Some other things going out the high school college, it's College Knowledge Month, so a lot of free applications for Minnesota State Schools and a lot of different college visits from college admissions counselors all across the nation, as well as a lot of students coming in and out of the College and Career Center to get sort of, of support and advice on, you know, college and all that fun stuff that revolves around it. And then teachers also discussed about Indigenous Peoples' Day on the ninth, which happened this past Tuesday, showcasing indigenous cultures and voices in a way to deconstruct whitewash history. We also have the blood drive coming up in November with various students taking planning and organization on that aspect. And the Maras Center was pretty filled up with a lot of different events going on. The choir concert took place on the 10th, the band concert took place on the third and 12th. And then the orchestra concert will be taking place tonight on the 12th, I believe. And then also the BHS Hall of Fame ceremony will be taking place tomorrow during the halftime game, halftime of the football game.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Any questions from board members? All right, we'll keep moving. Next, we will receive a report from Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Hume and members of the board. Tonight, I wanted to share two pieces of good news with you and with the community. Just recently, we were notified that our district and more specifically, our finance department earned the meritorious budget award from the Association of School Business Officials. The award recognizes excellence in preparing the 2023-24 school district budget and the district's commitment to fiscal transparency. There is an incredibly rigorous process involved in applying to receive this recognition. As you remember, this year's budget document was more extensive and detailed than we've ever had before. It was also presented in a way that would allow our community members to understand how we're funded and how we are spending those funds. This award is a reflection of the efforts, knowledge, and talents of our finance department team members led by Director Tyler, Tyler Deeny. Thank you to everyone on the team and congratulations. And second, I want to draw attention to Burnsville High School sophomore Feven Tesfaye. She was recently appointed by state lawmakers to a one-year term on the Minnesota Youth Council, which acts as an official legislative committee, presenting bills and offering feedback during the legislative session. Feven was recently profiled by Sun This Week newspaper reporter John Gessner. In the story, she shared the experience, what the experience has been like and the importance of raising your voice about the things that matter to you. Feven serves on the Environmental Justice Subcommittee, which deals with issues including climate change, environmental racism, and sustainable energy. She was quoted as saying, "It's hard to be a teenager and have such strong opinions about everything, but being in a large group with all youth with large voices and coming together to make an even larger one is something people are going to be forced to listen to." We are so proud of Feven for following her passion and sharing her voice with her whole state. And that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you very much. Are there any board member reports this evening? See a hand over here also. I'm first.
Thank you, Chair Hume. During the first week of October, I had the opportunity to attend a combined band concert in the Maras Center. Originally planned to take place in Pates Stadium, Mother Nature had other plans. Our staff were quick to adjust and our families enjoyed an indoor concert instead from all four grades, plus marching band and drum line. It was a lovely kickoff to the indoor music season, to the kick, to the music season at the high school. Friday night, and Cody, you already discussed this probably much better than I did, than I'm going to, but I'll touch on it a little bit. I attended the celebration of National Heritage Month here at Diamond Head. Our high school students, supported by community ed staff and the city of Burnsville, hosted a lively and enriching event. Students shared all elements of their cultural heritage, from history to food, to what they themselves love most about their heritage. Attendees also enjoyed a live dance performance. Special shout out goes to Etica Antiveros and our student leaders for hosting this wonderful event. This ends my report.
Thank you very much. Director Chester had her hand up as well.
On Wednesday, October 4th, which is the first Wednesday in October, is International Walk to School Day. And Ron Elementary hosted their first one in which we met at, everybody met at Peace Lutheran Church. So even all the buses were routed to stop at Peace Lutheran. And we walked from Peace Lutheran to Ron, which is about three quarters of a mile. So got a lot of energy out. They had the fifth graders start because they're probably the faster walkers with the kindergarten.
They have longer legs.
They do. They outwalked me. And it was a really, it was really great to see all those, all the classes there and walking as a group. And it's supposed to shed light on community walkability as well as, you know, kind of more of environmental, you know, reduced busing, you know, that kind of stuff. And also a nice shout out to the Eagan Police Department and Community Service who helped with traffic because we had to cross some streets. And so they were able to make sure that we all got there safely.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else have a report this evening? All right, then we'll move on. Next up on the agenda is, next up is the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for a separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Seconded by Director Werbe. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. All right, next, we are being asked to approve on a first reading basis, new policies 621, Literacy and the Read Act, and 624, Online Instruction. Amina Aftedal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, is presenting the recommendation. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Hume, Superintendent Battle, members of the board. This evening before you, you have two new policies. The first one is Policy 621, Literacy in the Read Act. This is a new policy based on the 2023 legislation, the Read Act. It includes definitions around literacy instruction and required staff, and definitions around who the required staff are for literacy instruction. It addresses assessment and screening, the literacy plan, reporting, intervention programs, and staff professional development and training, as well as the use of the literacy incentive aids to support the Read Act. So I would recommend approval of that policy. The other policy that is new is Policy 624. This is a replacement policy. It replaces online learning options with the new online instruction. The legislation has produced new definitions. These definitions and directions reflect the broader availability of online instruction rather than as merely a supplemental, but as part of a comprehensive school environment. Recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation for both of these policies?
So moved.
Moved by Director Werbe.
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, we are being asked to approve on a first reading basis, changes to Policy 425, Professional Development, 601, School District Curriculum and Instruction Goals, 603, Curriculum Development, 604, Instructional Curriculum, 616, School District System Accountability, and 620, Credit for Learning. Amina Aftedal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, is once again presenting this recommendation.
So these policies all revolve around our professional development, professional learning, and curriculum development and curriculum, and instructional goals. Their 425 adds the new legislative requirement for paraprofessionals or educational assistance for eight hours of paid orientation time. 601, School District Curriculum and Instructional Goals adds language from the legislation, including language around anti-racist, culturally sustaining, ethnic studies, experiential learning, and institutional racism, and how those are to be included in the district curriculum and instruction. And it moves all language around literacy back to Policy 621 that you just approved. 603, Curriculum Development removes language around literacy and moves it to Policy 621. 604, Instructional Curriculum updates language around standards for career and technical education and arts standards from the new legislation. 616, School District Systems Accountability updates definitions to better align with the Read Act and Policy 621. And it reorganizes statements that have now been moved to Policy 603. And it updates many legal references. So those of, the references for those have been updated. And Policy 620, Credit for Learning, updates legislative changes for post-secondary enrollment options. It does eliminate language around online learning, since all of that has been moved to the new online instruction policy, 624. And it establishes high school credit for employment with healthcare providers for high school students who may be employed with them during the summer or during the school year. I would recommend approval.
Thank you very much. Board members, is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor. Is there a second? Seconded by Director Chester. Any discussion? I will just, not a question, I will just say, I appreciate the context of why these changes are being brought forward. That's always helpful to know as a board number, is it, what the reasoning, what they're kind of a little bit about the rationale. So thank you for that. So that's all. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Then the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is to approve on a first reading basis, changes to Policy 299, Student Representative to the School Board, 504, Student Appearance, 418, Drug-Free Workplace and Drug-Free School, 506, Student Discipline, 515, Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records, and 602, Organization of the School Calendar and the School Day. Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, is presenting the recommendation.
Welcome. And good evening, Chair Hume, Dr. Battle, and members of the board. I'm here presenting some policies that were reviewed by our Policy Review Committee on September 26th, 2023. They include some minor changes to Policy 299, Student Representative to the School Board. That's some internal changes and tweaks we made to our process, to our process for our student board representative and how we navigate that. The second is Policy 504, Student Appearance. Those policy changes were driven by recent legislative changes. It includes hair, student hair, as well as treatment of indigenous student dress. Policy 5, 418, sorry, Policy 418, Drug-Free Workplace, Drug-Free School also went to the Policy Review Committee in September, primarily, primarily driven, or entirely driven by legislative changes around some of the new marijuana and cannabis laws. Policy 506, Student Discipline underwent substantial revisions and changes based on the new legislation. And so the Policy Review Committee considered and, considered and moved forward MSBA recommendations around things like non-exclusionary practices, revisions to discipline and conduct reporting, as well as reasonable force and access, student access to recess. Finally, oh, I'm sorry, two more. 515, Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records, also driven by legislative changes about student directory information that are now in effect. The Minnesota School Board Association updated the policy to reflect those legislative changes, and our Policy Review Committee reviewed them. Lastly, 602, The Organization of School Calendar and School Day. Some minor changes driven by recent legislation, mostly around e-learning, as well as the addition of Juneteenth as a holiday. I recommend these changes.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve these recommendations?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Director Werbe. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we are being asked to approve sending a letter to Governor Walz and other state officials and agencies to express support to continue helping law enforcement organizations gain the clarity they said they need in order to return school resource officers to schools. Director Chester is presenting the recommendation.
Yes, we were gonna bring it last board meeting, but wanted to have time for you all to read the letter because there was a recommendation for us to consider some sort of letter to our legislators regarding wanting to have them, you know, showing our support for continued dialogue in terms of coming to an agreement with, or defining more clearly the role of SROs. And so with the help of Aaron Tinklinberg, we drafted this letter. So we're looking for a review of, you know, approval from the board because this is one board voice recommending, and the Legislative Committee had reviewed it and made initial edits. And so this is what we're bringing forward to hopefully can have our legislators as well as the various law enforcement associations continue their dialogue to find common definitions.
Thank you. I wonder if for the sake of those who may be watching from home, if we could maybe read the letter?
Sure. Here's the letter. Oh, wait, I don't even have my microphone on, sorry. It says, "Dear state and community leaders, we understand that legislative leaders, state officials, and law enforcement representatives have been meeting to discuss the issue of law enforcement agencies choosing to stop providing school resource officers with the goal of helping law enforcement organizations gain the clarity they've said they've, they need in order to return to schools. As the Board of Education for Burnsville Eagan Savage School District 191, we are writing this letter to express our support of those efforts and encourage you to continue working together to find a path forward that keeps students and communities safe at the forefront. Burnsville Eagan Savage School District 191 has had strong partnerships with our local police departments, especially through our longstanding school resource officer agreement with the Burnsville Police Department. The partnership and especially the specific officers who have recently been assigned to Burnsville High School are highly valued by our staff, students, and families. In fact, in 2020 and 2021, we engaged our community specifically around the SRO program and found strong support for continuing it with the explicit goals of promoting a safe and positive learning environment, establishing strong relationships and building community. While we continue to provide that safe learning environment even in the absence of SROs, and we're grateful for the Burnsville Police Department's ongoing presence near or on campus, we hope for a return of full partnership sooner rather than later. Thank you for your time and continuing commitment to public education. Sincerely, District 191 Board of Education."
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller.
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. Any discussion? Director Alt.
Just a clarifying question. And it may not necessarily matter, but the agreement is with the city of Burnsville?
Right.
Not necessarily with the police department? Do we want, I mean, was there a reason that the Legislative Committee chose the police department as opposed to the city? And if so, I mean, if, if, if we would rather just do an amendment to change the wording, we can certainly do that. But if there was a reason that you chose the police department, that's fine, too.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
I mean, we could clarify that, we could call out the city of Burnsville with the.
Partnership, yeah, exactly, yeah. Yeah, because it is.
Because it's law, I think, I think we tuned it to the law enforcement part of Burnsville.
Yes, and that's kind of what I was hearing as I was reading it, yeah.
And I think it might have been because it's the, it was, I think it was the, in order with our memorandum of understanding with the city of Burnsville, it was prompted by concern coming out of the police department.
Exactly, yeah, exactly. So maybe agree, I'll say this out loud, and we can think if it makes sense. Agreement with the city of Burnsville and partnership with the Burnsville Police Department?
And in partnership.
And in partnership with the police, the Burnsville Police Department?
Agreement with the city of Burnsville and partnership with the Burnsville Police Department.
Does that work?
That's fine.
Yeah.
So is that a motion?
I will, I will make a motion to amend.
I second the motion to amend.
As, as just stated.
So we have the first and a second. Any discussion around the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the amendment passes. Now, we already have a first and a second, so.
We still open for discussion.
Is there any more discussion?
I just would like to, beyond my vote and coming imminently, express my support of this document and the language that we're in, within the document. I appreciate the careful crafting that went into it. Aside the slight adjustment we needed to make, which is fair. And I do enjoy the fact that we are specifically, I encourage people to read this if they did not listen to the reading of it. The explicit fact that we have been. not listen to the reading of it, the explicit fact that we have been very dedicated to the SRO program, the attention we've given to it, the thoughtfulness we put into it. And I do also appreciate the language in the first paragraph, that just clarifying that this was a choice made by city of Burnsville to end this, and not a choice made by this district in any way, shape, or form, so.
Thank you. Director Alt.
And to dovetail on Director Miller's comments, in conversations with folks in the community even recently, I know the letter talks about community support of our SROs going back to 2021. There continues to be support of SROs in our school, and, and this board is acknowledging that, I believe, with this letter, that, you know, we ourselves, our, our staff, our students, we continue to support having SROs back in our schools when the time is right. And yes, thank you Legislative Committee very much for drafting this. I'm, it's, it's really well crafted, and, and I think it really does a lovely job expressing where we are.
And I just wanted to reiterate the discussions that have already been occurring at the Capitol, so.
Yep. Any other?
Hopefully they continue.
Hopefully they continue. Any other discussion? I'll just add one final comment, that as someone who joined the board around the time the Legislative Committee was created, I appreciate that seeing it have, having kind of grown into its current form, where we're starting, where we're doing things like this and advocating with our legislators. So thank you to the, to the members of the Legislative Committee for that work that went into this. All right. Any, if there's no other comments or questions, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Now I lost my place, give me one second. I'll hear her. All right, that didn't take long. Next, we are being asked to approve the superintendent evaluation tool. The recommendation is being presented by Vice Chair Werbe.
Yeah, I made revisions to the, the tool to coincide with 2023 to 2024 with Dr. Battle's goals for this year. So those have all been updated and put into the tool. So I'm asking for us to approve it for this coming here.
Thank you.
That's my recommendation.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Seconded by Director Mursal. Any discussion? Director Alt.
Just to express gratitude, the vice chair's, second to the chair, the vice chair's role is full of great responsibility and work, so thank you very much, Vice Chair Werbe.
You're welcome.
I second that. Any other comments or discussion? All right. If not, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. This concludes the business portion of our meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn to a work session to discuss the Capitol Project Levy for Technology and receive an update regarding the temporary amendment to Memorandum of Understanding for School Resource Officers, followed by a closed session as permitted by Minnesota Statute Section 13D dot 05 subdivision 3D of the Open Meeting Law, to discuss security procedures and emergency response to possible crisis situations during board meetings? That was a mouthful.
So moved.
Moved by Director Mursal, seconded by Director Alt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. We will adjourn to the workshop at 7:05. Do we need a couple of minutes? And it's only 7:05 now. Do we need a couple of minutes to transition? Five minutes? Good? All right, we'll be back, and we'll re-adjourn in five, reconvene in five minutes.
The current capital project levy for technology approved by our very supportive community in 2015 has funding through the 2025-26 school year. Tonight, staff and I bring you three options for placing questions on the ballots for voters to renew the tech levy or share their thoughts either way. For each, we share possible implications. And for background information, we have provided history of the current levy, the board's role, and staff do's and don'ts. And Aaron and I can share next steps after the board selects a possible date. So Aaron and I will now go through some key highlights from the document posted. So it is organized first to give you some general information about tech levies, our previous historical information, and I'll have Aaron go through that section, and then I'll walk you through the different categories of implications for the three dates, August 13th, 2024, November 5th, 2024, or November 4th, 2025.
All right, and thank you, Dr. Battle and members of the board. The background information about the tech levy is there just kind of to make sure everybody's on the same page in terms of what a tech levy actually is. Not everybody, in fact, may be only a board member was on the board when this was actually passed. So a tech levy is officially called the capital projects levy, and it's an approval of a tax rate on the total tax capacity of the district rather than, for instance, the levy referendums that we've done before, which are, you know, a dollar amount per student. So those are really tied to enrollment and the amount of money we get, the amount of revenue we receive would be tied to whether our enrollment goes up or down. The money reflects that. This is levy on, like I said, a tax rate on the capacity of the district as a whole, and so it's more tied to the growth of the school district as a whole as well. So it's a little bit different in that way. It does, it's also different from a bond referendum, which of course is more for buildings, for selling those bonds to create capital improvements. Background that you can see there, voters did approve it. About 63% of voters voted yes in 2015, which at the time that levy was expected to raise about $2.5 million per year. You can see that technology levy is used for everything from buying the devices that students use every day to supporting, paying for the staff to be able to support those devices and make sure that that works and create the plan and not create the plan for all of those. It's been incredibly useful, as you can imagine, over the last four years in particular. We were in really great shape, thankfully, when the pandemic did hit and all the students had to start learning remotely and from home. So that's kind of the basics about what a tech levy is. You can see the question, the official ballot language there. Of course, we'd work, when this were to go out for a renewal to the voters, we'd work with our lawyers to make sure that we set the ballot language correctly. One thing that may be different is if it's just a renewal, it wouldn't necessarily, wouldn't necessarily be a tax increase on property owners in the district, and so that language might change. It might not say by voting yes for this that you're voting for a tax increase because it would be keeping the tax rate the same.
Want me to go ahead or take questions now?
Let's just keep going, I think.
Okay. So possible election dates, we thought of a few categories that have implications for whatever, whichever date you choose. So the implications include the last day to call the election, Dakota County absentee ballot costs, do want to note, we do have Scott County as well, municipality responsible for running the election, hiring the election judges and training the head judges, messaging and communication, participation consideration, and funding. So if you look at last day to call the election, 74 days, no later, 74 days prior, and that's applicable to all three dates. The difference with the Dakota County absentee ballot costs, if you choose the 2025 date, it's $10,000 cost to the district. For responsibility, August 13th and November 5th, 2024, it would be primarily the responsibility of the city clerks. They've been really helpful in elections. But if you choose the 2025, it would be primarily the school district's responsibility. Hiring the election judges, very similar.
I know I just said no questions, but that's because the 2025 is not, is an off-year election year.
It's an off-year, yes.
And the other two would be doing it in conjunction with other elections that are already happening.
Yes, so that's why it's an additional cost, you're in the off-year. That also applies with the hiring of the election judges, so there is a cost for the November 4th, 2025. Aaron can share a little bit about the messaging communication implications, pretty much the same for all three, but you want to go through some of that details?
Yeah, it's just obviously really important that we conduct an information campaign around any election that we have, especially if we're asking voters to consider potentially raising or keeping their taxes at a certain level. Our responsibility is to provide that information. We just do information only, of course. We don't advocate one way or the other as a school district. That's, there's some implications that go along with that in terms of limitations on staff and board members as well, in terms of what they can and can't do with their own time. And I think I maybe included a link in there as well to the staff do's and don'ts document that we always make sure to send out. So we've done this several times, of course. I've probably been part of, oh, I don't know, eight or 10 referendums in my career. So we've got kind of a plan that's established. It actually always starts with doing some research. So one of the things that I would recommend to the board, if the board is considering a renewal, is to start by doing a community survey and finding out if there is support for a renewal, and then using that information to help us, to help guide the board in terms of setting the question, setting the timing, making sure we're communicating information that families and residents need to know about the levy referendum. So it starts with that. We might do that in the spring, for instance, for a fall referendum, and then do the information campaign once the board actually decides to move forward with, with an election.
The next category, participation consideration. So the first date, that is a presidential primary. The second date is the actual presidential election year. And then November 4th, you would not have a primary, presidential primary or election. So really, it's about making sure that our voters are informed, and with so many, so many other races going on, will our voters really be knowledgeable and understand? So it's really about, as many of you know, the commercials knocking on the doors and how many of us stop answering the phones and looking at commercials. So really, it's just about making sure our voters are informed and knowledgeable. And the last one is funding. I mentioned previously that the last year for the current technology levy is 2025-26. So with the first date, November, excuse me, August 13th, sorry, I misspoke earlier. August 13th, you have one more calendar year to pass the capital levy without disrupting funding. November 5th, 2024, same, you have one more calendar year. And November 4th, 2025 is the last date to approve without disrupting funding. And then lastly, we have some links about the board's role as a district ambassador, as a citizen, and then staff do's and don'ts. That would be a part of, once you set the date, will be part of our official campaign. With that, that concludes our summary.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I do just want to clarify one thing. I think I heard you say that August 13th, 2024 is a presidential primary. It is a primary date. It's not, the presidential primaries in March.
I mean, November 5th, that's the one I made.
That's the electoral, presidential election day. Right, and then I think the August date is the primary for like senators or state primary. The presidential primary is in March. That's correct.
And so this evening, for clarification, you're wanting what from the board?
We are providing input and guidance on next steps as a board for Dr. Battle and her team on what our initial thoughts are, given the options that we have.
I think I understand primarily we're picking the date, right?
That will be part of the recommend, the guidance, yes. I don't think we're deciding a day. We're making recommendations for next steps because we have to kind, have to formally approve it later.
That's a good point of clarification. If the referendum goes forward and fails, is there some sort of cooling off period we have to wait or to go again, or we could put it immediately on another ballot if we wanted to?
It would be a matter of having the time to set the question again, so that 74-day responsibility. I don't, I should, I should clarify, I'm not sure about whether if, for instance, the board put the ballot or put the question to voters in August next year, if it would be possible to bring it out again right away in November. I'm not sure if that, what the implications are of that are. There's not a delay from year to year, though. If the district went out for election in November of 2024 and voters voted no, the board could choose to put it on the ballot again in 2025.
Which is typically best prac, it's, generally, it's been accepted practice that you want to give yourself two opportunities to go out for the levy. So, you know, the question is, you know, if we're being asked to provide guidance, of course, we're going to go out twice. We're going to expect that we need to, you know, we want to give ourselves the opportunity to go out twice. The question is, is it August or November of '24 so that then we have '25 as a backup just in case '24 fails?
Right.
Yep, that's where I was headed, I just wanted to clarify.
And where there's no cost to the district on most of these.
Well, I think it's just the cost of doing business, quite honestly. I mean, I, I, 2025 is going to be what it is, and hopefully, you know, I mean, I trust that our communications department, knowing, knowing what we've, what you've, you all have been able to do with referendums and levies and bonds in years past, the communication support has been there, the support from our community has been there, our families have, you know, have been supportive, as has the community, and it's going to be important for all of us to be involved as community members, not just as board members. And that, you know, that obviously is a different conversation. But, but yeah, 2025, that the cost is going to be what it is if we, if we land there. I, I would like to think that we'll be able to be successful the first time around. The question is, you know, August, is that fair transparency to the community because we know that people will be out voting in November? You know, I know in, you know, in prior levy efforts, the conversation has focused on, well, when are people actually going to be in the, in the ballot booths, right? When are the people actually going to be voting? We want to make sure that we give our, our voters the opportunity to vote for this, this bond. It's our responsibility to get the information out, to get the facts out about what it is that we're asking of them. And, and I know that, Aaron, you and your team will be able to, to do that in addition to, you know, engaging our families.
I have, first of all, I'm not in favor of the last date simply because it puts us against the wire without including the possibility that it doesn't go down or fails. So I have a little bit, a different perspective on the November 5th choice. I mean, first of all, I'm not sure that I, I would ask Aaron if we, if August 13th, and not immediately, but I'm, you know, if that's really an appropriate date, if we can get the job done and communicating fairly to the community. I'm assuming you put it on the list, you feel that's possible. But my concern about November 5th, frankly, is sort of the other side of that coin, is that, you know, general election, I, I'm a little afraid of a message on the, on a, on an election ballot that simply says your taxes are going up with a, with a voting group coming in that may not have taken the time to educate themselves about the question and the implications of it.
Yeah, I, I think that's, again, as Dr. Battle mentioned, the, the amount of noise that will be around the November election will certainly be something.
It's going to be greater than probably any other election in our, many decades.
Yeah, potentially. That's, that's definitely true. I'll add, though, that the, the people that will be going to the ballot in August are prob, will probably not be focused on, that won't be their focus interest either for most of them.
I don't know, I tend to think the people that go out for primaries tend to spend enough time understanding what they're going there to vote for, but they also might be, I, maybe we shouldn't spend our time guessing who's going to vote on it. I don't know.
Well, and I think also, where is Morrison Leatherman on this?
That's, we would definitely connect with them and prior to a, a community survey in the spring and.
Well, and usually there's some sort of input, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, in terms of, in terms of, they have come here and presented to us as we've been making this decision.
So at AMSD, Morris Leatherman did present because there are several districts with questions on the ballot. And the question was posed, is it still the prevailing argument that the presidential election is not best for school districts? And it really comes down to your local context because no voter is the same, whether party or affiliation that they have. But it is getting the information out, so people are knowledgeable. So that is their recommendation. You really have to make sure voters, a surprise voter is a no voter. You have to give them the information. So that's their prevailing. And so you can talk about the survey and when they do come to kind of add their perspective.
Yeah, I was going to ask about the survey, actually. If you could talk a little more, because I was glad you brought it up because I had it on my list of things I wanted to ask about anyway. So could you talk a little bit more about what that looks like, what the process is, who would be part of the survey?
Yeah, yeah, we've worked with Morris Leatherman in the past to do community surveys, actually just in the spring of 2022. And so we, I'll work with them or we'll work with them to develop, you know, a survey tool that they'll deliver generally via phone, not generally, they'll always do it via phone. They do have changed their practices over the last decade so that they're reaching out to people where they are, so via cell phone, and that they follow up with them. So their surveys are still scientific, obviously, they're reaching the community. They do provide interpreters or do the survey in multiple languages as well, so it's not just in English, which is helpful, obviously, in our community. And they'll include, we'll be sure to include questions that we want to include around just the district generally, so satisfaction levels, trust, and questions for the dashboard, for instance, questions that are part of our metrics, but then also a section that's specifically around intention or, you know, feelings towards a potential levy referendum. So if this were on the ballot, where would your support be now? If you knew this, you know, would that change your, change your vote, or would that change your mind? All of those questions that they've done a million times, just to try to see where the, where the community is at. And, and then they'll be able to say, okay, you've got strong support, or it's, you know, it's questionable, or, or voters right now are not ready to support a ballot measure. And the board can take that information and make decisions. And they'll test, you know, although in this case, if it's just a renewal, it may not be such a matter, but they'll do, they'll get down to the level of testing dollar amount. Would you, if it was $5 a month on your taxes, would you approve it if it was this much? They'll get down to that detail.
So if that would help in the board's decision-making, that's part of the guidance we're seeking.
Well, that's what I'm wondering is given, I would, I would like to hear from other board members, but given the feedback we've already heard, I wonder, have we in the past included as part of those surveys, date one and date two as part of the input collection process?
I don't think so, no. Previous referendums, we've always held on general election date, or it's been related to a bond referendum, in which case the date's set more around what's good for construction, trying to get it done earlier so that we can start construction.
Okay. What do other board members think?
About the dates?
The dates, or, yeah.
I mean, I think.
I mean, I assume we're all in agreement, we want to go, we do want to go for a renewal. If you don't, though, then that was a time to say that, but.
Yeah, under, under that assumption.
Under that assumption, yes.
I, I think we need to cushion ourselves, so go out next year with the cushion of the 20, 2025 as the backup.
And do you have a preference between the August and November dates, or are you like me and keep going back and forth?
I go back and forth, you know, because I think there's a potential to, I think there's a difference between general election voters and those that are dedicated to voting during the primaries.
Right.
And so I think we might actually miss a constituency of people in a general election versus the ones that just tend to really are strong suited to vote in the primary.
Right.
So I guess I'm leaning more towards the presidential election, although.
That's a really good point, too, because I was thinking the same thing, but then I do know a lot of voters that vote early and vote before the presidential election and are looking for that information.
In advance.
Yeah, we, yeah, we want to get it to them sooner than later. I'm one of those people. I always try to vote early, too.
That's def, that's definitely one of the things that's had to change in our campaigns, even just in the last five years, the, the predominance of early voting and vote by mail. Since that's become such a, a much easier option for people, we definitely have to get information out earlier.
I know quite a few people that do that. By the time late October rolls around, they're already saying, oh, I already voted, I already voted.
I voted a month ago, yeah. Right, it's a good point. It's a good point.
So the last one was on, the last time we did this, it was on a presidential, wasn't it?
No, 2019 was the last levy, levy referendum.
It was.
And that was the only question on the ballot in 2019.
Oh, okay, because I was thinking.
It was an off-year election.
Off-year, okay.
It was, right. There was nothing else on the ballot in Burnsville, Egan, or Savage. There were other elections around the state, well, he's not, yeah.
And this capital projects levy, this tech levy, was approved in February of 2015, but we could do it in February because that was, it was with a bond referendum at the time, all the Vision 191 referendum.
They needed a break ground at the high school that summer.
High school additions and improvements at the schools.
I feel like it snowed.
So we potentially would have a lot more people voting, obviously, for the president.
Certainly, and if we held it in November 2024, we'd have very, yeah, quite a few more people voting.
Yeah.
Do we have data on, like, how these typically go, or we just don't know? It's kind of a big.
This will be the first time that we've ever renewed a tech levy for, here in the district. We've had very good support, as mentioned, from the community. In my time here, we've passed every referendum that we've put to voters. Tech levy renewals typically pass throughout the state because, again, it's usually a zero-dollar increase or, you know, percentage increase on, on people's taxes.
I guess I'm, I'm leaning towards the, the presidential election ballot. That's what my gut tells me.
And what other, does anyone else have other questions or comments about where we are?
For me, I mean, you know, it's, it makes perfect sense with a presidential election, but, you know, if we talk about wanting to do it again and stuff, you know, like, in August, you know, there's always this talk of, like, the early voting because, you know, it's, it's cold, you know, it's rainy, it's this and it's that, and people don't want to come out, you know. In November, you know, August is nice and warm, you know, we're going to have, you know, good number, not the same number, obviously, as a presidential election. But, you know, I, for the sake of buying more time, you know, if we could do, if we do it in August, if we could do it again in November, I, I am leaning towards more in August.
Do it again in November of '24 or November of '25?
November of '24, if we could do it again.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So potentially two next year?
Yeah.
If it didn't get passed in August?
That's not.
I think that would be difficult.
Okay, okay. Then I would do.
Wait until November of '25.
Yeah, then I would do the presidential if we can come back, yeah.
And that, and just for clarification, I'm hearing support for conducting a community survey in the spring, right?
Yes.
And that'll give you time before Friday, May, for that first date, but it seems you in time for that if you do choose the August 13th.
That's what I would say is.
I was just going to.
Yeah.
Chair Hume, Superintendent Madeline, Board, just one more data point to consider is the, the statistics around other levies that have been conducted in the state and other districts, especially on presidential election years. So we have our internal data and our history and story, but also to consider some of the.
And do we have, I know, I think that was what you were alluding to, was presidential election results, yeah.
I can gather that.
Yep.
That'll be good. So what, I think what I'm hearing as far as direction is, nothing is decided, looking at November and doing a survey, the cert, the community survey over the next few months, and then we'll revisit at a later date when we have more information.
So, yes, but one question is, is, did I hear right that we, we may be demonstrating that we're, we're acknowledging there'll be a property debt tax increase or that there could be no tax increase?
It would depend on what question the board decided to put on the ballot. If the board chose to just offer a renewal or ask for a renewal, then it would be no tax rate increase on, on properties. It would be the same, that would be the idea, is it would keep the same tax rate for this capital levy.
We would need to have a discussion about that part, too.
Yes.
And then, because I'm just wondering, given the report with our, how our students are doing academically, if that's going to impact how our boarders.
In terms of supporting the levy.
It is hard to predict what it's going to motivate people, right?
Well, I think we're definitely going to need more information.
What's that?
We're, we're definitely going to need more information. Yeah.
Legally, are we required to put a term on the, the request of referendum? And is that, does that have a defined timeframe on it? Is the limit of four, four years or five years, whatever it is?
No more than 10 years is the max.
No more than 10 years. And we know for a fact that you're not allowed to put an evergreen statement on that at all. So in other words, if we, if we'd added that, if that was able to do that, and we're able to add that, and we'd done that, we could be sitting here saying, if we don't want to go to a referendum, it just continues, and that's not legal. It has to end 10 years.
I believe that's correct. The legislature did provide a provision around operating levy referendums where the school board could approve that, approve a renewal of it without going to voters for an additional term. So we've got a levy referendum that's in place at least through 2019 or 2029. At that time, the board could consider whether to approve that, but that's not what we're talking about tonight. The capital levy expires after 10 years or at the end of the term.
Yeah, I'm just asking if that's a possibility to do with the next one. To your knowledge, no, okay.
Not unless the law changes, is what I'm hearing.
And I guess, I know we've probably, well, we've definitely seen it in our, our budget, maybe coming forward with what, what the levy did yield annually would be helpful just to understand.
What it did what?
What the levy yielded annually.
The actual taxes.
It is on, yep.
And the, I assume that Director Gordon's department will be involved in any kind of suggestions that come forward, so we understand plans and such.
Absolutely.
We need to understand if there's, you know, things that want to, everything from necessity to dreams need to be understood, so. We need to understand if there's, you know, things that want to, everything from necessity to dreams need to be understood, so.
If there's one thing I know about Director Gordon, it's that she has a, she has a plan.
I'm sure she does.
She seems like a planner.
We just need to hear it, so.
Yep.
Right. Board members, is there any other thing that we would like to request for the next time we have a conversation around this particular levy?
I think the things we've been talking about.
Just like to ask now rather than.
More information.
Four months from now and then find out, oh, we should have asked about this. If not, then thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. Stay tuned. To be continued. Next, we are discussing the memorandum of understanding for the school resource officers and where we are with the temporary amendment. Dr. Battle. Right? Are you, do you need a moment to collect yourself?
Together. So the Burnsville City Council did discuss a temporary amendment to our memorandum of understanding. For providing school resource officers and you have a copy. For your review and discussion. The city attorney and our attorneys have been in discussion. And so there hasn't been an agreement to the draft amendment. Mutual agreement for the temporary amendment that you have before you.
So this is, this is the original language?
This is the original language. So the purpose of this conversation is to share, kind of share an update and. Get board input on where we are in the process.
And if I understand right, so they initiated this, they created this language, correct? This initial language.
Here, I'll just go through the whole thing.
Yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we were notified at the end of August that the city was not going to be putting the school resource officers into our, into the Burnsville High School. I should have looked up the date. Do you remember the date that you and I met with Mayor Kautz and with City Manager Lindberg? It was like the following week, I think. I think it was around September 10th or so that we met, 10th, 11th, that week that we met with them and we came to an. A verbal agreement that we wanted to kind of codify the decision that the city had made. So that we would acknowledge and recognize it and confirm a few things like. The city agrees that we will not be paying them for the contracted services as long as the SROs are not in the building and such. So we had a meeting. That was agreed and then at our request, the city's attorney did the first draft of the amendment, which is what we have this evening to look at. And we have since then had several conversations. I've met another time with Mayor Kautz to talk more about this and we have another meeting coming up. Week after next, the week after MEA, we have another meeting where we hope to perhaps get everything finalized. So it seems like. We are in agreement based on our earlier conversation and just based on things that I've heard. And the city is in agreement that we want to continue our partnership. So it's kind of, you know, they say the devil is in the details. So that's kind of where we are. As far as that is working out the details for the amendment. Do you have, do you want to talk a little bit about what? Kind of where we are and what the concern has been?
But this does not.
That's what I was just.
This does not include the, our attorneys recommended.
That's what we were gonna, that's what I was just gonna have her address, touch on, right?
Do you want to give details from our attorney's perspective?
So we just to maintain each party's rights and to have flexibility. And acknowledge their concerns, but at the same time, understand. That it's clear what their beliefs are, but then giving us flexibility.
Well, I have flexibility for what happens if nothing changes at the legislature or something changes that's not to the city's satisfaction or to our satisfaction. I think any of those things are possible, so.
And open ended.
Right.
Because irrespective of a pause or. If there was a, we still don't have onsite SROs. So it's just really about maintaining what happens. When they get the clarity and we don't know what may happen with the legislature. So just being clear about what happens then. What if it's not to the satisfaction of both parties? Because who knows what may happen?
But in, just to clarify, I mean, really what we want is. An agreement to come back together, to come to an agreement that, okay, we're both ready. For the SROs to come back into the schools and this is what it will look like. That's essentially what we're looking for.
Um, yes.
Is that true?
Yes.
Okay.
So the alternative option is is the path that was originally taken by the city where essentially they just. Exited the contract. And would terminate the terms of the contract and we would have no contract. And if if they were to, things were to change, then they would be able to. We would have to renegotiate the contract or potentially just redraw up the same one, whatever, but we would have to restart a new contract with them.
That is one of the legal options that both parties.
Well, that's the original legal option they put us into initially. But then thankfully, they came forward with this idea of a pause. That's, I'm just clarifying this for anybody listening. This has gotten a little confusing. So what we're talking about here tonight is an amendment to the amendment, to the the original MOU to. To pause things and it would just stretch out the existing contract. So if they, if the terms for which they could return were satisfied. Then they would come back and we would just turn things back on. It would allow the reinitiation of the SRO relationship.
Correct.
Didn't happen much faster. The question I have, so when they proposed this language, as I asked, you just clarified. We, and as you've meant comment, we had our attorney look at it and we reviewed it internally. There was just, to be very clear for anybody at home, some very contractual type of language. It was that we, that our attorney felt that was necessary to. Bring back and adjust. It's not anything to do with the circumstances around how SROs operate in the building or anything like that. It's simply protection of both parties involved in this contract. That we proposed back to them. Now, where is it in this, where are we in that conversation? Because my understanding is, did we hear a response back from them on that, those proposed changes?
Part of why we decided we needed to have another meeting because the conversations. There seemed to be a disconnect. I'm not sure if it was, we were not understanding the city or the city wasn't understanding us as far as what we wanted out of this amendment. And so that's why we have this next meeting coming up in a week and a half is to, you know, I think sometimes over the phone or by email, it's. Easier to not fully understand the nuance than if you're having a meeting in person.
Because I believe they passed, they voted on something.
They voted on.
City council.
They did not vote on this, well, the amendment was an appendix to what their actual.
It was a resolution.
Exhibit B is what it's called.
Exhibit B. So this is what you had before you exhibit.
Right.
Which is not something we've.
Cities, they were, what the city was voting on, if I remember correctly, was. A kind of a formal written, a formal city council approved. Of the letter, basically of the letter that we got from Chief Schwartz. Saying that the city was not going to have the SROs in the building. That's what the city council approved. And this was one of the. Exhibit Bs that was attached to that city council resolution.
Okay.
On what I understand and what is still vague in this MOU. Is. That. There's a pause, but I think there, I think we were asking for. A date to determine whether or not that pause continues or when it ends. And then.
Right.
The pause lift is satisfaction is a very ambiguous word. So there's clarity that's needed to be what meets the grounds of that for either party to be satisfied.
Right.
With the, with whatever is chosen by amended by legislation if it happens. And then the other recourse is if there is no change legislatively, what is moving forward?
Right, because the 24, 25 school year after this one is the last one in the current, in the current MOU.
Right.
So if nothing changes the legislature, does that mean the city's not going to have.
Right.
SROs back, in which case we would need to decide by next spring what we're gonna do for the next school year.
Are we still under that number one pause?
Wow, that's, right.
Clarity there.
That's why we need the clarity, exactly.
Well, and I think also, and I know Scott, you and I have talked about the, you know, the financial implications that, you know, it's. We need to have someone to fulfill part of that responsibility. Certainly, you know, the SRO is a unique and specialized role. And yet there are elements of that role that, Dr. Battle, you know, we we know that we need to, we need to fulfill in in the absence of an SRO. So part of what we need to make sure we're doing is, as good stewards of the taxpayers' money, is to make sure that this MOU allows us to. Fulfill that responsibility and then in the fortunate time that the city is able to return the SRO to the building. That we're able to accommodate both, what are we doing with that FTE that is fulfilling that responsibility? Bring the SRO back and not find ourselves in a situation where we're double dipping into our, into our budget.
I'm glad you brought that up because that was one of the things I was gonna ask Dr. Battle to talk about is the financial implications of kind of where we are and. Leaving it as open ended as it currently is.
So. Based on our financial year, the first half, first semester, the city paid the SRO salary. And then we received the invoice, so probably about February, we paid, we paid our half. And so going forward. I did take the time to get the perspectives of Burnsville High School administration, the staff and the students. Because everyone values the SROs. And so basic questions about what do you like about the safety features, what's missing? So students, staff, the relationships that the SROs had with students and faculty was just noteworthy. They really would like. From the staff and Burnsville administration, they like the additional safety precautions we have put in. They would like more eyes on cameras and parking. And I think it's important to distinguish between student misbehavior and crime. So Burnsville Police Department has been clear, if there is an emergency, that we would call 911. So it's really having the extra eyes. And so looking at an option, I would say an FTE would be a dean. So as you know, that person would not want to just have a month by month contract. I mean, that's something we could have. But what happens if we hire a dean and then the legislature does provide the clarity for Burnsville Police Department and they come back? Then I'm paying for that FTE, full-time FTE, and then I have to absorb the SRO. So there is a financial implication.
Helpful.
So I would like to add a dean.
Has there been any, we brought the changes we recommended to the city. Was there comment on those or just?
They haven't come to agreement yet on the flexibility that you expressed here. Some things, yes, but we're still not at mutual agreement. And so that's why we're planning to have another meeting.
Now, I might understand that their position is now liability. Is that what's holding them up? The liability to the amendment of this MOU? Is that what is the disconnect? Or we don't know?
So I think that's always been a concern about the liability with the language in the. Update to the law. So I think that's always been. But are you asking about the update?
Yeah, I was wondering about the amended one. Are they still, where is their, yeah, where is their?
Yes, with the additional guidance, so Attorney General Keith Ellison did provide additional guidance. They still are seeking clarity. And are concerned about the liability.
Right.
Yes.
Yes. Other comments, questions?
So I, my understanding is the purpose tonight was not necessarily to come to any conclusions or providing guidance, other than that we support what's going on and continue doing what we're doing.
Right.
I mean, just more and making sure that everybody's.
An update, a conversation.
Perfect. I think we've accomplished that then.
So. In a very public setting.
Yes.
Still think it should be reiterated that this was not something the district initiated.
Yeah, that was part of the parent feedback. They thought we initiated that. So I mentioned I surveyed and so. To clarify that, some of the other questions are, they just have questions about why.
And I would, you know, just. Regardless of what it is, that we appreciate what the, you know, the police department has done, continues to do for us. Even today, I was at the high school picking up my child and noticed an officer was parked on the grass there up by the field, so. I'm assuming on patrol, whatever, but so I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Yep.
All right. If there's nothing else for that. Then we will adjourn to our closed session.
Do we do it here or do we?
We're doing it in here tonight. The recorder's right here. Yes.
We just have to make sure that they're off air over there.
I think I read it when we start.
Okay.
Yeah. But do we need five minutes?
We need confirmation that that's shut down.